Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and it streams on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, can I get roll call, please?
Members Blaisdell.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Remotely.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Brown.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present.
Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the citizens of the state of South America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And moving on to our next item on the agenda, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for October 16th and October 23rd. Item B, Bills and Communications Approving Claims in the total amount of $6,137,676.08 and bad debt write-off totaling $49,745.98. Item C, Approved Visit Tri-Cities 2023 Reserve Funding Request and Tri-City Regional Hotel Motel Commission 2024 Marketing Plan and Budget. Item D, Resolution Number 4386 Housing Action and Implementation Plan Ordinance Number 4688 Amending PMC Chapter 3.40. And Resolution Number 4387 Terminating Inter-local Agreement Related to Pilot Fee in Lue of Tax. Item E, Arts and Culture Commission Appointment of Patrick Fleming. And Item F, Resolution Number 4388, the 2023-2024 Pasco Police Commanding Officers Association Collective Bargaining Agreement. And with that, can I get a motion?
Hey, Mayor, can I ask, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hey, I had a clarification question. I know on the docket, we did have, on the previous one, there was like a D, we're talking about the Road 100 in Argent, as far as putting that into the city, but I know there's an update and I've been having trouble with my iPad. Is that still on the docket as far as the previous D where we were talking about rezoning the Argent and Road 100 from residential to commercial? Because obviously I'd be against that.
Councilman Milne, we're at the Consent Agenda still.
Yeah. It was in the Consent Agenda. The previous version. I'm asking for clarification on that, please.
It's been removed.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, although, oh, sorry, can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
For Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brown. And Mayor Barajas.
Unanimously, item number five on the agenda, Proclamations and Acknowledgements None Listed. We'll move on to item number six, Public Comment. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by our clerk, and we have a timer here on the right. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meeting minutes. And with that, I'd like to invite anyone in the chambers. If you'd like to express an opinion, you have three minutes.
Yeah, the item's on the agenda later on, I believe, isn't it? Yeah, it's, uh... From, it'd been moved from the Consent Agenda. That's item E on the, under, under nine, or sorry, under 10, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. Item E is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. That's up to council if they're going to take comments at the item, so that would be up to the chair to decide.
We're at public comment, so if you have your three-minute comment to address council on anything other than a hearing item. No, sir.
Mayor?
Just for clarification, so everybody understands. So, item E is on for the regular, it's on the regular council agenda and it's on for an action item. It is not, it doesn't have a public hearing associated with it, so there will not be any formal opportunity for folks to address the council legislatively. It's not required. It will be up to the chair to decide if she wants to allow comment at that time. If not, you can make a, this would be the time to also make comments related to that matter since it's not associated with a public hearing. You could also do that now if you don't want to take that risk.
Sir, I'm sorry. If you can address the microphone, turn on the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Phil Klein. I live at 10309 West Willow Way, Pasco, Washington. So, yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we had an open hearing about this, and I'm a little confused. One man, I actually talked to him over there, two weeks ago, and he tried to tell us he was going to enhance our neighborhood by bringing commercial into our neighborhood. But I've been there 23 years, and unfortunately, last two weeks ago, all the neighbors were here. This place was packed with our neighborhood who are opposing this. So, one man comes in, he wants to change the zoning that's been, it's all houses, everything. If you live out there, you know what I'm talking about. It's all housing neighborhood, and this guy wants to come in and wipe out a house in a trailer and put in commercial. It's just not the right spot. It's not what we want. It's not why we moved out there. We have enough issues with the traffic already on Road 100, and that place is Argent alone getting onto Road 100 is a nightmare in the mornings with the, you have Chihuahua School and all the stuff that goes on there, trying to get on there. Now we want to do a commercial. He's talking about a strip mall, maybe a gas station. We have all that commercial up towards the highway more. There's plenty of places for him to put in more commercial up there. I don't, I don't see why he wants to come into the middle of a residential neighborhood that's all residential and pop in this little section of commercial. I guess I'm confused why one man has the power to come in and do that when there's hundreds, if not thousands, of neighbors all saying no. And I own 1.23 acres. If you're going to allow him to rezone that commercial, then the rest of us want the same privilege because we all can put our, we can't, right now, currently, we cannot put businesses in our backyard. So, if I wanted to start a back, whatever kind of business, put a shop in my backyard, I cannot do that because it's residential. So, I'm a little confused why we aren't considering allowing one man to have the privilege to come into a middle of a residential neighborhood and put his commercial in, and the rest of us can't. All I'm, all I see is you're opening a can of worms. You're going to have a ton of people applying to split off their land and put commercials in and ruin an entire neighborhood. It's been there 50 years plus. It's a residential area. He needs to, I don't care if he builds houses, I think everybody agreed here that it doesn't matter, he wants to build a houses there, if he wants to tear down that house and the trailer and build some homes like right about a block away where they did that, they developed that, we're okay with that. We just do not want commercial brought into our residential neighborhood that's been there forever. It doesn't seem right, and it's the wrong place for that kind of development. So, I ask you to vote no on that, an entire neighborhood. Unfortunately, I think it was not well advertised here for tonight that we could talk here or even come to this. Neighbors didn't come because they thought it was two weeks ago is when we had our opportunity to say, speak our piece. So, it's a little confusing how this thing runs, but anyways, I'm speaking for that entire neighborhood. We do not want it. Please vote no on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If you'd like to step to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Oh, my name is Steven Schlegel. I live at 9304 West Richardson Road there in Pasco. Couple of comments on this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. The, I am against it, okay? This property is located on a corner where you have got court coming in, it's a main drag going up to the interstate, you've got Argent coming in there, and it's actually, that's where the property is located. And you've got all the traffic coming from the north, such as Pasco on that side of the interstate, along with a lot of the traffic going all the way over to Road 68 that comes that way to go up to the interstate. I mean, the traffic is, I've been there now for about 11, 12 years, and the traffic has always been getting worse, and it's going to continue to get worse because they're still developing, putting in houses and whatnot. Right now, it's straining, the infrastructure is there, and commercialization will just really mess it up, okay? We don't have the infrastructure there. And Pete Reiki, his comments that were sit, uh, in earlier, he goes into that in a lot more detail than what I'm doing here in three minutes, so you've got his comments. And there's no driver for commercial there. Every service we need is located within a mile to a couple miles away, either going up to the interstate or going over to Road 68 and going up that way. There's just no necessity for the services there. And the description in the application, a walkable business area, is laughable. You don't put walkable areas on a big busy intersection. They're always located mid-block so that traffic and that can go in and off the street without affecting everybody else. This just doesn't make good sense to have it there. It's not a walkable area. It's not hardly a bikeable area. There've been some people hurt on bikes. They were at the planning meeting, one lady, a poor lady that had got hit on bicycle there. It just, it doesn't work. And what it's going to do is mess up. You've got a plan, you've got commercial at Road 68, you've got commercial up at the interstate, you don't need that commercial area there. We don't need that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
My name is Teresa Khrushki, and I live at 10213 Willow Way, which is just not far from there. When I first heard about this rezoning, you know, of course, you think your property values, but the one thing I thought about was the safety issue. It's a very busy, it's, it's all residents, it's all families. We're a short-distance walk to the bike path, so then you get a lot of bikers, you get a lot of people in, you know, strollers, families, walkers. And I think even if you change the infrastructure, it is still going to be really unsafe because of the high school that you have there, the middle school. As we know, the high schoolers can be easily distracted, so if you have a really busy intersection with people trying to get to the bike path there, it can be dangerous. And I, and I, I know about safety because I was riding my bike, not there, but in a part of, off of Broadmoor, the other end, really wide, safe, so I thought, but he was distracted, and I got hit on my bike. And I think that if you have a lot of drivers and cars and people walking, it just is going to create even a more, a very safe environment, especially, like I said, with our close proximity to the bike path. So, I am against it for that reason, because of the families, of what is surrounding the proposed acreage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Could you step forward and state your name and comment, your name and address?
Good evening, council. Peter Harpster, 525, Road 47, Pasco. Just a few comments to make tonight. The, a couple of weeks ago, I was up here, mentioned the water rights transfer fee proposed increase, and did want to just follow up on that, say that, as I mentioned after public comment, staff did host a Q and A session. I was unable to attend, so I emailed Director Worley my questions. I had five questions for him, and all of them got answered. And I hate to say that I support it, because nobody likes to pay more money for development, but it does make sense, and looking at it from a long-term perspective, without it, and we get to the point where there's no water for development, so it wouldn't matter anyways. And so, I appreciate Director really taking the time to explain some things to myself and to whoever was here for that Q and A session. Also, wanted to give kudos to staff for the Halloween celebration that happened here at City Hall. I brought my family out, and it was really, really cool to see all the effort that went into it. It was not a shoddy effort. Decorations were really cool, as Councilman Serrano was there, and just really cool to see a lot of folks, way more than I anticipated would be here. The parking lot was completely full, and, yeah, so it was on that. And then, lastly, there's a election tomorrow, I don't know if anybody's heard about, and so I just want to encourage people to vote before 8:00 PM tomorrow. It's cool that it falls every year so close to Veterans Day, which is this Saturday, and I think one of the best ways that we can honor veterans is to have our voice heard in casting votes and make sure that their sacrifices are not in vain, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And the gentleman in the back, does he still want to make your comment? If you can turn on your mic, please. There you go.
He's turned it back off. Look for the red light.
A red light? There you go.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Duncan Campbell. I live at 10208 West Willow Way, just basically about a half mile from Road 100 in Argent. We're considering this rezone. My question's pretty plain and simple. I think, you know, years back, they had a comprehensive plan that zoned all this as residential area. The commercial was all up north, north of the canal or so like that, and people come into this area by property, build homes or so. This comprehensive plan was done, you know, this was laid out or so on that, and this is why we're out there. So, I'm kind of wondering, why are we even considering a rezone? You know, at some point, they went through a process to determine, you know, what was correct, what they would like to see out there. Me and my wife, we are against this, and the question I had is just, can anybody at any time just come through and say, let's change what you did? You know, I think that that's just kind of, speaks to a wasted effort from before or so on that. It's all that worked went into this, so we're against it. You know, I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Keith, in the mic.
Sir, can you press the button to turn on the mic? The red light will come on. There you go. Thank you.
Jeff Smith. Family has the property at 9808 West Argent and the property at 3012 Road 97. One of those properties didn't even get notification on this. Everyone I've talked to agrees, the notification process, the city then was poor. You guys can probably feel different about it, but you're getting way less input on this because most people don't even know this is going on. Another thing I'd like to say is, this fellow come in and bought this piece of property knowing it wasn't suitable for what he's attempting to do, which no one's really telling us what he's attempting to do. I haven't, I've heard all sorts of ideas floated around. I'd like to, I'd like to have some details on it. I know he's trying to get a commercial, high density, that can mean so many different things. So, I can envision a lot of negative impact to the neighborhood depending on some of the things that he may be attempting to do with it. People invested money in that property, and this fellow come in and bought that property knowing it wasn't suitable for this, but his idea is screw it. I'm just going to go ahead and change it when I get it. It's less than three acres. The city's going to go through all this effort for three acres? It's going to affect everyone around them. Our property is right next door. We're going to be stuck with this from now on. Once it's there, it will always be there. And I don't see it answering our way of life. And one last thing I'd like to ask you, would you want this right next to the property you owned? I bet all of you'd say no. If you think it, you probably wouldn't come out and say it. That's all I have to say. I'd encourage you to turn it down.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Marla Marvin, and I'm actually speaking for Pete Reiki and Connie Smith. Both are friends of mine. My address is 71 Terrace Drive, and I know that their comments were included in your packets, and so hopefully you got to read them because they're very thoughtful. And I took my kids to McLaughlin and Chihuahua High School, Middle School and High School. It's not walkable. Anytime I saw a friend of theirs walking along Argent, I would say, do you need a ride home, and would give them one. So, that's not a reason to develop this, and there's going to be plenty of opportunity for business on Broadmoor as that kind of gets massively developed. So, I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any last comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. And now, item number seven, Reports from Committees and/or Officers. Do we have anyone wishing to share on any events, meetings that you may have attended? I have Councilwoman Serrano first, and then Councilwoman.
As Mr. Harpster mentioned, I did attend the Halloween event, and that was very well done. Kudos to the staff. Awesome decorations, nice job partnering with our community partners who donated candy, time, resources. I assume probably part of the decorations were done by them as well. If not, you know, whatever the case was, I know that this wasn't just city staff, and I do want to give kudos to staff, but the ability to reach out to local businesses to support our events is tremendous, and so, so I really appreciate that. And, you know, it was pretty cold, so it was nice having a warm spot to trick or treat ahead of going out in the cold for the next several hours. You know, I will blame you guys for giving my kids diabetes, but thank you very much. It was a very awesome event. Mr. Pedborek, thanks for letting my family tag along with yours for a while, and that's one other element to these types of activities. You get to interact in a non-Monday night way that's very, I appreciate it. It builds a sense of community between staff and other staff and staff and council member and the public. So, again, thank you for the awesome evening, and I know that Mr. Harpster and I are the only, aren't the only ones saying thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. I don't have as exciting of an update as I know that you and Mayor Protem have, so I appreciate going before you so you don't show me up with my measly Visit Tri-Cities update. But fun things happening with Visit Tri-Cities, they just have their annual luncheon at the convention center, but prior to that, we had our October board meeting, and so some of the great things that they're developing for the Tri-Cities and for visitor tourism here, we have Ironman Triathlon coming in 2024 through 2026, so that's not just a one-year event. Tri-Cities in Pasco, actually, which, this is why I was happy that, you know, I spoke up and said, how come not as many events are happening in Pasco as they are in Richland? Because they seem to get more of the events that are being hosted. But the Latino World Series is going to be hosted in Pasco, which is amazing, so bravo to us, we'll get that. Horseshoe Pitchers Association Tournament is happening in 2024, 2024 and 2027, but that's happening in Kennewick, I believe, at the Toyota Center. U.S. Tennis Pacific Northwest Sectionals is going to be held here as well. So, and then for a nice collaboration with the Pasco School District, the WIAA Cross-Country State Championship is going to be held here as well in 2024. So, lots of great things. Wanted to also share a brand-new event that is being put on by a collaboration between MyTry2020 and the Uptown, which are the businesses in Richland. Again, Richland seems to be the feature here, so hopefully whoever's taking my place on Visit Tri-Cities Board after I step off of council, you promote and promote and promote Pasco with the Visitors Bureau. But they're going to have this Tri-Town Get Down, which is a local festival that will span a few days. They will have 10 stages from John Dam Plaza, Howard Damon Plaza, and the Uptown, so lots of bands and music and family-friendly events, so all really good things.
Very good things.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. Excellent to hear. Anyone else wish to share? Mayor Protem Brown.
Mine's a bit brief, Madam Mayor, thank you. Councilmembers, of course, everyone probably in the world knows we went to Kalima, so I'm going to drop that right now. I'm having some electronic difficulties up here, so I'm going to give a full report of my, my trip to Kalima, but today, I'm going to say, this thing will not pull up the report, and I will not do it injustice, so I'm going to give a full, well-written report on next, next meeting. But what I will say about the trip was, one, I enjoyed it because it was positive. We had a tight schedule, so we did a lot of meetings, and they were long, but I believe they were productive, and the sisterhood that I believe that we went to accomplish was accomplished. A port-to-port business, if it all goes well, it's going to be awesome. Their educational programs are, they speak for themselves, so if we can create a unity where we do a student/teacher exchange, that's a big W for us. So, we're looking to connect all those things together, and like I said in my report, I'll get more into detail about trade and all those great things we did, but I will not butcher it tonight. But I do want you to know that we had wonderful meetings. The governance is, all of that and more, very professional, very diplomatic, the whole team was. I think we were treated in such an awesome way. So, Pasco, you were well-received in Kalima on many, many levels. I think we represented very well, and to the staff, to Madam Mayor, thank you all for the opportunity for us to go and take a real sharp look. um, thank you all for the opportunity for us to go and take a real sharp look um, and how the sisterhood can happen. And actually, I sit here feeling really good about it already happened. That's how, that's how awesome the visit was. So it was very productive. It was not a vacation, so we want to make sure we get that out the way today. It was not. We went and did business and I believe we executed on the behalf of every constituent here um, in Pasco. And I believe firmly that we did an excellent job. So I'll give you my full report with some fancy words and great programs on next week. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Uh, Councilman Milne, do you have anything to report?
Um, no, I'll, I mean, again, I had a great time as well as far as with the meetings and I thought Colima was really good. And I thought the meetings went really well and I will say, I think you did a phenomenal job uh, as far as representing Pasco with your Spanish and with your knowledge of the area. And I was uh, really proud to represent Pasco and be part of the group. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Does anyone else have anything else to share before I just do a brief, very brief share? Okay, um, so I do want to share that first, um, before I go into the Colima trip. Um, thank you Jesse, Director Rice, for the event, the last uh, farmer's market that I was at last Saturday. Uh, there was also a uh, Dia de los Muertos fun run. There was, uh, I was a, I was monitoring the pumpkin contest. A lot of great talent out there. And to all of you that won uh, for your art, uh, congratulations, everyone out there. Uh, but it was a very fun event. It was a great way to close a farmer's market season. So I hope to see everyone else come back next farmer's uh, market season and grow that even more. Um, it looked like everyone had fun. So, thank you for setting that up. Um, very brief report regarding the Colima trip to Mexico. Um, there was a, three council members that went. Um, uh, Mayor Protam Brown, myself and uh, Councilman Milne were out there with a delegation of uh, staff from the Port of Pasco and the Coville Tribe. There was a group of about sixty people that went. This friendship agreement that we signed last year is now going to see, um, is going to reap its great benefits. We sat uh, with the Admiral, uh, Admiral Salvador from the Port of Manzanillo, Colima, uh, who promises that commerce will run smoother. Um, we met with a lot of key people in the Education Department, in the uh, Cultural Department, um, in the Health Department. So, this agreement promises to begin its, its actual exchange of benefits with both import and export. And so, we'll be reporting back. I know the Port of Pasco is preparing a report, a full report to share with you all. Um, and so, we'll be sharing that here very soon, along with Mayor Protam's report. But it was, it was a great visit and I do want to mention that uh, our previous Mayor Matt, Mayor Matt Watkins, uh, sitting here in the audience was there as well, as he was one of the original um, people that was um, was helping push this, this friendship agreement. And so, again, it was very, very successful. Um, thank you staff for allowing us to go. Um, and with that, um, we will move on with our agenda. Item uh, seven B, the Pasco Public Facilities District Board Report. Uh, Director um, Rice, do you have a report?
I actually do not have the report, but I'll be introducing uh, somebody that will be writing a report here. Um, but prior to that, I wanted to give a brief history and recap of the Pasco Public Facilities District. So everybody stand, uh, understands where we started from and where we're at. Uh, the PPFD was funded in July two thousand two to plan, finance, construct and operate regional public facilities, including arenas, convention centers, stadiums and other similar facilities. Um, since that time, the PFD Board has studied the possibility of a regional aquatic center for several years, but the project wasn't supported by voters from all three of the cities. Um, in two thousand nineteen, I changed the state law, allowed the PFD to proceed with a proposal of a local aquatic center versus regional, meaning here in Pasco. Um, due to that change, in two thousand twenty-two, the PFD uh, proposed a measure to the voters for an aquatic center and co- uh, competition pool here in Pasco, which was ultimately passed. And this January two thousand twenty-three, started the collection of the approved funds towards the aquatic center construction. And last year, uh, Matt Watkins was hired to manage the project and he is here this evening to provide an update of the activities over the last year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Matt. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council and also staff, thank you so much. It's a, a, a bit unusual. I came all prepared to be in PFD mode as the executive director, but a lot of themes tonight came back from when I sat over there. So, and thank you for uh, 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 also mentioning Colima. You all, I think, did a wonderful job deepening that relationship with a pe- portion of our population, significant portion of our resident population that does have deep uh, ties to Colima, Colima and that region. So wonderful program. And also, I just got to say the Covilles and their entertainment are incredible and to be able to see Justin Rafa and Jose Negas uh, uh, sing with the uh, the, the, the orchestra in Colima was a high point for myself and, and appreciated that. Uh, I also appreciate, appreciate Jesse giving a summary too, and I think that's a prime example of another partnership that the Pasco Public Facilities District, which is of course appointed by uh, 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 Mayor and members of council. And I do have Mark Morsette, the president, here this evening and he and four other volunteers are on the PFD Board. And he'd asked if I present and if you have questions for him, he'd be available certainly and, and uh, I'll, we'll see if I can, with fourteen months under my belt, be able to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on with the process. Uh, Jesse uh, pointed out to sort of the timeline. Uh, and again, another thanks to the City of Pasco. Probably the best thing that helped me, helped the PFD was being able to co-locate here in City Hall uh, and work with all the departments that the City of Pasco has been working for twenty-plus years. PFD that uh, do a lot of work, including uh, Public Works uh, uh, has been very helpful. One of the big things, and I'm gonna do this a little bit out of order, but wanted to share a few of the details. Uh, the, the thing that's worked uh, for us is that we are very close to choosing a designer builder for this project. The PFD chose an alternative process instead of the design bid build, which you know sometimes can have the owner pitted against the designer and the builder. This will at least one less step in that the design build team uh, is a one entity. I believe we're about to award that contract here in the, uh, in this month. And that's when the big work starts of actually designing it and building it. Still have plans to complete it by two thousand twenty-five. Uh, and I think we're also gonna, uh, once we do that, that designer builder onboard, we'll uh, uh, we'll, we'll get with them to confirm the specific dates and details along the way. And I'm thinking and hoping there's a, you have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm not seeing it up here, so I'm gonna go off of memory. Down arrow. Hey. Thank you Jesse. Perfect. All right. And I would love to be able to show you a design rendering of what this facility is gonna look exactly like. But, but like, but since we do, are doing the design build process, that doesn't come until after we do the designer builder. What I do have is some examples of other places that I think are models for the Pasco PFD to use. This particular facility is in Snohomish, one, uh, Washington. So I think about five years old and it includes both the uh, recreational side and the competitive side. As you're probably aware, voters approved this project in a phased approach. We're gonna do the recreational or the fun side first. Or another way to say that, that's also the side that tends to have uh, a payback and it'll be able to afford the second part, which is the competitive side. Uh, key I think showing here is that you gotta, you gotta slide poking out of the side of a building. Imagine I, hopefully we might have a couple of those slides. If I learn anything, do two slides, not one. Uh, and you're gonna have a lot of glass and, and that sort of thing. Here's the inside of the Snohomish recreational side, uh, which you can see here is a little lazy river. You see uh, uh, family hot tubs. You see uh, amenities for little kids with dump buckets. There's locker rooms in the distance. You see a glass wall on the right and just rest assured on the right side is a uh, is the competitive side, a full-on, full-on uh, half Olympic pool. Imagine that being phased too. So of course, we'll, we'll, we'll make that available uh, when we do our project. And what you don't see behind uh, the camera is what we'll call a wow factor and I'll show a little later. Uh, again, detail, some of the amenities. What's key is, I think we're going to be deciding amenities here in the near coming months as soon as we get the designer builder onboard. We're gonna be engaged in a public outreach process. Again, Pasco is actually helping us on that as well. Uh, we're gonna engage the community. I'd say that it's been a theoretical exercise for what an aquatics facility is gonna be for the past twenty years, but it's gonna quickly translate into specifically the details that we're gonna be able to want and also afford for the facility. So what many, th- this is just a smattering of a couple. Uh, there'll be, there's a massive amount of, of options these days. Uh, there's for example, a whippet, uh, think bouncy castle for the water. That's an amenity you can, you can also buy. And the, although these are outdoor, uh, the idea of a larger, larger lazy river or a competitive slide, uh, I think that resonated with some folks. Uh, and also, if I learned anything, having pizza parties or rooms for quinceaneras where families could come in and rent a place, uh, get tickets for their twenty or so friends and family members and then rent pool space is gonna be a key feature. And I think this one, it might be uh, Linwood, which is another example. Wow factor. One of the things that we'll be able to do is, since this facility was, is well-funded in that we'll be able to do something significant, maybe something nobody else has in the Northwest or maybe a limited number of folks. Examples of this include wave pools or flow riders. Uh, these are expensive items, so we're gonna have to pick that one that we do particularly. But I think that uh, this is going to be able to help not only attract people to the facility and, and it'll be popular, but also helps with that tourism element because this is a regional facility, not just a facility for the City of Pasco. Uh, families and seniors are gonna be important. Uh, and, and I imagine zero-depth entry and water aerobics. And we're gonna of course need to make sure we take care of our folks that may have a little bit of mobility issues. And I just liked this picture because whoever volunteered to take a wheelchair and go hold her breath is pretty incredible. So, that is kind of a philosophy that I think the PFD is engaging along with the board is making sure that we include all the people of Pasco and secondarily, people of Tri-Cities and the region to be able to use this facility. Little bit about where it's being located. You're probably familiar with the Broadmoor site. We want to locate there. Not only do we want to locate there, uh, the board has uh, determined that they do and also to do what's called a civic campus. This is an idea that, and this is just a little bit blow-up area where it says study area to the east side of the gravel pit basically is the area we want to locate. Um, this is something new to us and it's a draft concept and it's subject to change. This is an idea that you have in the upper right, which by the way, would represent the Northwest, so you do need to tilt it ninety degrees. Uh, it would have Ben Franklin Transit have a park and ride in a transfer area, make sure that kids are able to get to this facility. Uh, in the upper, or excuse me, lower right or the northeast corner, the City of Pasco, of course, uh, has a uh, temporary community center uh, over here, but wants to uh, build a new, uh, new community center. Uh, so be able to locate that there. And then of course, then an aquatics facility uh, with some expansion and we also might have some ability to do some community courts. So this is just a concept that if we have a fifteen or twenty acre campus, uh, that's gonna have community things, uh, community things. And this is popular in also some of those Western Washington locations. Uh, timeline, uh, and I think Jesse hit some of the points and I won't uh, go through all the, all the details, but uh, we're, we're about to award design build, uh, property acquisition. We're working on, on that. I anticipate we get that done the next couple of months. Some of the big steps that we have to do, uh, we do not have the money to build this outright, so we're gonna have to go bond it. We believe that we can bond about forty, maybe forty-two million dollars for phase one. Uh, and uh, we also have to go through a state financial review as well. Uh, you're gonna see design and construction because it's a design build process. It's not that the construction will start right away, but anticipation of construction and the long lead items will be part of that process. So the next couple of years, then we're gonna be designing and building it, still planning for a completion in two thousand twenty-five. Uh, just a couple of notes, again, that city partnership is critical. Uh, we've been running very lean and can, will continue to be lean. We'll be, there will be a point though, we'll have to decide employees and that sort of thing, lifeguards and what we'd be able to pair with Pasco and the, and, and uh, uh, the, the lifeguard pool uh, for that. Uh, or I think there's also might be some lessons to learn for our peers across the river in Kennewick Public Facilities District. They've done some announcements that have some, they're going to a next step. And well, the Pasco PFD has gone a significant step, being a caretaker, because you're probably aware that Pasco's money has gone up until this voter-approved uh, initiative, has largely gone to the convention center in, in Kennewick, the idea to keep it a community. But then now the Pasco uh, PFD is a, has a big project to do. But it also, once it gets done with that facility, is gonna have to think about how might be able to use these kinds of facilities for economic development, for tourism and that sort of thing in our community. So I kinda give you a little peek of, I think, the next things that we'll be looking at for the next several years. And again, strong partnership between city and the Public Facilities District is key. And of course, we have a new representative, uh, Ms. Blaisdell, and she is excited and uh, and, and involved in this and we're looking forward to working with her as well. I would say that is a brief summary of where we're at, where we're headed. And also, I think we're gonna need a mascot. Uh, Ms. Victor Rice uh, is excited about idea of mascots and shared that with PFD recently. So, you're all invited when we do do the ribbon cutting in two thousand twenty-five. And with that, if you have any questions or, or comments, I can, I can take, uh, I can, I can take those.
Thank you. Before, before I um, call on, on Councilman Serona, I just wanna say, I appreciate all your hard work. And I do want to say this real quick. It's a little awkward to, to have you on the podium on that side, but thank you again for your work. Councilman Serona.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Um, I see you have a draft uh, budget. Now, it, it starts with a roughly five million dollar. What have we collected in the taxes? Cause we're sitting on ten plus months, so nearly a full year.
I, and I can tell the exact numbers, but it's been ranging between three hundred and fifty thousand and four hundred thousand a month.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, in fact, if you look, it'll be uh, proportional to what the city, uh, the city gets, just a different, different amount. Uh, it is, uh, that is significant funding and, and I think it's been performing slightly better than expectation. Mercy, of course, uh, uh, is the head of the Finance Department and helping us out too, and she's nodding, so I'm saying that correctly. Uh, and, and so about three hundred fifty, four hundred grand a month. Uh, we do have some money in the bank and we believe we're gonna be able to do some of the design work until, and uh, also probably put a bit down payment on some property until the bonding that we're planning in quarter two.
Nice. And so will those funds help really alleviate some of the taxpayer, I mean, some of the additional burden on the uh, on the bonding and, and that sort of thing? I, I know at one point, the concept was to pay it with the taxes and also pay it with, if we ever operated a plus, right? At least that was the concept at one point.
I, 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 I would look, but there's, I believe there's always going to be a deficit on any operation. There's gonna be less of a deficit on phase one of the operation. Uh, and, but, but at the same time, those, those revenues will be continued to co- be collected. So they'll be able to build the bank up to do phase two and then conceivably, whatever project might be next for the Pasco PFD.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you Mayor. Um, um, Director Watkins, trying to remember the correct title here. Thank you for your presentation and I love the, the images that you've grabbed from different places across the state, but especially that uh, the PFD has in mind, um, making this facility accessible to people of differing abilities. And so, thank you for doing that. Um, I did have just a question about the Civic Hub enlargement slide. Um, so looking at the Aquatic Center, there would be a, a competitive pool, um.
Phase two, yes.
In phase two. So just wondering what looks like what is north here in the way that the image is oriented. What are those buildings or that, that facility up there in the north, what looks like the northeast corner?
One more, and uh, again, this is, you need to rotate this to the left ninety degrees so that the word, the Pasco PFD logo would be at the top, would be north.
Okay.
Um, and the uh, you're probably familiar, the, the gravel pit's gonna be over here to the west or the left. This is where Ben Franklin Transit wants to put a five acre, not only a transfer station, but a park and ride. Uh, so think Tulip Lane or uh, uh, the one across from the uh, Transit itself. Uh, it, and so West Pasco has kind of become the geographical center of the Tri-City. So they want to make sure as their larger plan to be able to service all the Pascos, it's kind of been more going west is this is an important piece for their uh, transit hub. So that, that section campus also would serve well, the, the, the aquatics facility and then presumably the That section campus also would serve well, the, the, the aquatics facility and then presumably the surrounding businesses abroad more.
Okay.
Is that, is that helpful?
That is really helpful. Um, that is helpful because I wasn't quite sure what that was. I, I'll just simply say that I, you know, what I reported out to the council and, and just the beginning of the meeting. I think this aquatic center really meets, um, not just the residents of Pasco's need for recreation, um, but. It, it takes the box of the Tri-Cities region, Visit Tri-Cities Sporting Strategic Initiative. Which is to create more opportunities for these type of events to happen here. So for that reason. Um, I also really love this. I was already on board, but now I'm even more on board, so thank you, um, for sharing that with us.
And to the, uh, uh, Visit Tri-Cities asked me to be on the board as well as a member of the, uh, Public Facilities District. So, and I've also had some extra opportunity to try my best to help out with Pasco and Franklin County, uh, issues and. I heard your point earlier and.
Putting in the plug for us to have more events.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, I do wanna add that, uh, this makes me very proud. We have been talking for several years, um, about bringing something for Pasco. Residents for the children that cannot afford to travel. To Moses Lake, to Cordillane, to all these other places. Having this facility here locally just makes me proud. We've been talking about. Accessibility, about, about making, and it's gonna make me emotional, about breaking down barriers, uh, for all those individuals. Even the accessibility for individuals with, um, disabilities. That is what we need in this, in this area, in Pasco, and having you as part of the PFD. Representing Pasco, um, and I know with this full support that we're getting from Councilwoman Roach. On advocating for Pasco and bringing more events to Pasco, this, this is a team that we really want. And so, thank you again for making this finally, uh, 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 coming through. It looks like it will be coming through. By two thousand twenty-five.
One person that I just close to emphasize the point that Mr. Moore set and the four, four other board members that include. Uh, Leonard Dietrich, uh, Marie Gillespie, Caroline Bowdish, Spence Gillette, member, volunteer members of the community. They say often and regularly, there is, we gotta do this right and we're gonna get one chance to do it. And that theme resonates, and I'm sure that Mark's probably nodding at that point. Uh, so we're working hard to make, make that happen, uh, as, as efficiently and as expeditiously, but correctly, uh, as we can.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing then, again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Hearings and council action on ordinances. Um, and resolutions relating there too. Um, item A, public hearing and ordinance number forty-eight, forty-six eighty-nine, right of way vacation at Road seventy-six and Chapel Hill Boulevard. Uh, Director Gonzalez, do you have a report for us?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to introduce City Engineer John, John Padvor to, uh, provide you with a brief presentation on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so the city has been working on the early stages of the Road seventy-six overpass project, which will connect. Vehicles pedestrians over the freeway which currently bisects the city. And as part of that process, a feasibility study was performed. And the results of that study was that we needed to make some adjustments to right away that had been previously dedicated. And capture that now prior to some upcoming development activities to make sure that, that that's secured for future use. Um, so the city worked with a property owner and, uh, came to, uh, mutual agreement with respect to a right of way vacation and dedication. Essentially a swap, um, that would give us the right of way we need and get rid of some that we don't need. And that's the item for you to vote on tonight. If, if you have any questions, let me know. I was trying to keep this brief.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council in regards to this? Article.
I'll just throw one out there. It's not really as much, uh, with the right of way, um, for. Um, for vehicles as much as I was interested in knowing, is this also going to be? Will there be a side-by-side pedestrian skybridge with this overpass that's happening at this, this section?
At this point, um, we're at, I think, a probably five percent feasibility study, so we don't have a, a final design drawing of it. The current concept is to have a separated, uh, pedestrian way, so you'd have vehicle travel lanes. And then a, a barrier and then a separated, uh, bike and pedestrian, essentially kind of a multi-use path over that bridge. So it wouldn't be bike lanes, but it'd actually be a, a separate protect, protected corridor that pedestrians could use to get over that bridge.
Okay, so not quite. Uh, the concept's not quite built out yet, but, but the idea is to have two separate spaces.
Yes, that's the intent. I think it'll be one, one physical structure, but it would have a, the current concept is to have a divider, so you have cars and then a. Uh, a safe divider and then an area where pedestrians could, you know, kids could do for a bike ride, you could walk, you, you could bike and you wouldn't be. You know, intermingling with cars going over the overpass.
Thank you.
Good question.
Believe this is a hearing. So.
So, yeah, we need to open it for a public hearing.
Thank you. With no other questions from, uh, council members, uh, this hearing is now open. Um, and I will take any comments from anyone in the chambers in regard to this specific matter.
We'll comment briefly. I've been coordinating with the property owner. They weren't, they were out of town. They weren't able to be here tonight, but they wanted me to express that they, they did support. This activity. They've, they've been, um, collaborating with the city on this effect.
If you'd like to step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just really briefly, just so grateful to see this project come into fruition or on its way. We have to get West Pasco traffic moving. And the gridlock on sixty-eight and what could come at Road one hundred. So just thank you to all of your directors who've worked on this and look forward to this. This is awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else wishing to make a comment or question in regard to this specific matter?
Chairman, um, sixty-five fourteen, West Pasco, our Park Street. Um, thank you very much for your guys' um, continue focus on trying to be able to connect. West Pasco from the north to the south and south to the north. Um, like many parents, when you're trying to be able to take your kids after school to, um, either from the school to your home or trying to be able to get them to sports. Um, the different sports fields throughout Pasco is very difficult. You're, um, locked in and extra twenty minutes in traffic. And, um, people are trying to be able to get home, um, as you've seen, uh, throughout the years, a lot of congestion and, um. Car accidents from sixty-eight Court up to, uh, sixty-eight Argent and then Chapel Hill and then on up to, uh, North on sixty-eight. And so having this opportunity to be able to alleviate some of that pressure, especially as the city grows and the city's looking at forty thousand additional residents. This forward kind of thinking, I applaud you guys. So thank you very much and also to the planning department for the work that they've done. And thank you also for considering about foot traffic too, pedestrians. Our students, um. Need the opportunity to be able to get to and from school safety, uh, those who, um, would like to be able to increase their steps in the day. To those who have not the ability to be able to own their own car. Affordable living is a difficult time. It's hard to be able to afford housing, and so thank you so much, let alone car, car insurance, gas, and as you guys know. Those prices have increased. So thank you for your guys' time and thank you guys very much for your forward thinking.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call for comments on this issue or matter. Third and final call. Seeing no other comments, this hearing is now closed, um, and can I get a motion?
Um, Madam Mayor and Council, I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-eight-nine, vacating right of way at Road sixty-eight and Chapel Boulevard. Chapel Hill Boulevard in Pasco, Washington, and further authorize publication by summary only.
Second that. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? And it passed, oh, Councilman Millie?
Yeah, I said aye.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you. And with that, uh, item number nine on our agenda indicates for an executive session. We do have a need for executive session. Uh, discussion with legal counsel about legal risk of current or proposed action per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero. One aye for ten minutes, so it's eight oh two. Uh, and we can add a five-minute break to return at eight seventeen. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
It is eight seventeen and we do have a need for an extension of five more minutes. Um, so we'll be back here shortly. Thank you. It is eight twenty-three and we are back from our executive session. Thank you everyone for sticking around still.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend our agenda to move item E. Item ten E to immediately before ten A.
There's a motion. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? That was uh, Councilwoman Leston. So we will be moving nine E. Oh, sorry. Yes, ten E up to. Ten eight. Let me get my notes corrected. Thank you. So it just messed my agenda a little bit. Okay, so we are moving on after our executive session. We are moving on to our. Next uh, item, item ten ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings. And ten A is now resolution number forty-three eighty-five dash twenty twenty-three. Comprehensive plan amendment docket, Director Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Uh, tonight's presentation is with respects to the annual amendment process associated with the city's. Uh, twenty eighteen, twenty thirty-eight comprehensive plan. Um, as a reminder, uh, the Growth Management Act and the Pasco Municipal Code specifies that the comprehensive plan uh, should be considered a, a living document. Um, and then to ensure consistency uh, with both the comp plan and the GMA directs uh, cities. Uh, to create a docket that clearly identifies uh, amendments and applications and proposals to be considered as part of any uh, annual amendment process. Um, for the twenty twenty-three uh, cycle, the application window was open for um, applications from applicants from uh, January through uh, early May. Uh, the city uh, received the one privately initiated application for this year's cycle, so a little bit less than uh, last year's eighteen. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so the criteria for uh, the docket establishment is identified in the past municipal code entitled twenty-five. Um, and those criteria are on the screen um, uh, for you right now and uh, I'll run through those a couple of times this evening. Uh, the criteria is, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision on the uh, application? Uh, will the city be able to conduct sufficient analysis and develop uh, any necessary policy related development regulations? Uh, has the proposed amendment been previously rejected for consideration? Uh, will the uh, amendment implement and comply with the adopted comprehensive plan in the Washington State Growth Management Act? And uh, the last criteria is, uh, is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? So, uh, when we receive applications um, uh, for the amendment cycle, uh, those are the uh, first set. Uh, criteria that uh, we run through with the applicant and then bring those obviously to the planning commission and the city council. Um, as a reminder, we can go to the next slide. Um, there is a two-step process associated with the annual amendment process. Step one is establishing the docket itself. So what are the applications that are going to be considered and evaluated for uh, any uh, respective year? So, uh, that is step one of the process. That is currently where we're at. Uh, and based on the applications or items that are uh, put on the docket via resolution. Those items are then um, fully evaluated uh, based on the criteria that is uh, in the past municipal code. It's a fairly lengthy. A criteria list roughly eight to twelve or so separate criteria items that have to be addressed. And when those um, uh, evaluations and analysis have been completed. Um, they are taken back to the planning commission for workshops and hearings and a recommendation. And then back to city council for another set of uh, recommendations and determinations. And uh, the final step associated with the two-step process is whether council wishes to. Um, approve, deny, or modify a proposal. So, um, we expect that uh, portion of the amendment process to be in front of council. In the uh, springtime of twenty twenty-four sometime. So with that, a kind of a background on the amendment process, step two process, we're in step one. Establishing the criteria and so I wanted to run through the description of the proposal for you this evening that we received for the twenty-three cycle. Uh, the uh, applicant has applied for an amendment to the future land use map. Of the uh, Pasco Comprehensive Plan to change um, roughly three and a half acres or so. From the current low density residential land use to mixed residential commercial land use. And, and my apologies, the correct acreage is two point eight six acres. Uh, the city issued a determination of completeness on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. That indicates that the applicant has both had a pre-application meeting with the city and has uh, fully. Uh, submitted all of the necessary application materials, including the SEPA environmental checklist. Three, next slide. So here is a uh, vicinity map or an overview map of where the uh, proposal is um, is situated. It is located on, I apologize, there's a thin red line um, outlined with uh, the word site there, but it's located. On the southeast corner of uh, Argent and Road one hundred. Uh, interstate Road one eighty-two is uh, a little bit further to the north and Court Street's a little bit further to the south. Um, so uh, that is the uh, proposal location. And on the next slide, um, this is the uh, future land use map for the city of Pasco. So this is the most recently updated land use map that incorporates last year's amendments as well. Uh, that yellow uh, indicates um, low density in the comprehensive plan. That blue is a uh. Blend of public and civic uh, uses, schools, parks, et cetera. Uh, that orange uh, to the northwest is a medium density residential and you can see a little bit of red as you get close to Chapel Hill. Uh, that indicates commercial. So that uh, uh, you can see the site outlined again in thin red line. Um, that is where the um, the project, I'm sorry, the land use uh, proposal is located um. In comparison to the neighboring uh, land uses. Next slide, please. So, um, again, uh, there is a five criteria that need to be met. Uh, in order for it to satisfy um, a recommendation from uh, the planning commission to be placed on the docket for consideration by city council. And uh, that five criteria again is shown on the screen. There's a very simple. Uh, yes, uh, or no uh, indicated on this, but I, I can provide a little bit more feedback um, analysis on those. So with regards to criteria, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision? Uh, there is sufficient time for council to make uh, an informed decision, at least for staff to bring that back to council for a decision. Uh, staff accommodates amendments on an annual basis as required by the Pasco Municipal Code. On the criteria number two, will the city be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy and related development regulations? Uh, the CED department has available resources to conduct the analysis to develop any necessary policy or related development regulations associated with the proposal. The uh, Pasco Municipal Code also provides a uh, process and um, list of procedures for the land use actions associated with this proposal. Um, at this point with it simply being a land use only matter, the amount of evaluation is, is somewhat limited. Because there is no project and there's no zone change associated with this proposal. It is simply a land used, a land use request. Criteria number three is uh, asking if the proposed amendment has been previously rejected for consideration. And the answer to that is no, uh, this proposal has not been previously uh, subject to a comp plan land use amendment or part of a rejected decision. Uh, criteria four was, is with respects to uh, does the amendment implement and comply with the adopted comprehensive plan in the uh, Washington State Growth Management Act? And uh, any associated or proposal associated with the request will be required to be in conformance with the adopted comprehensive plan. Um, this request is a non-project land use proposal. It meets the requirements of the PMC. It meets the requirements of the PMC as part of the annual comprehensive plan amendment process. Both our comp plan and the GMA again allow and encourage cities to consider applications to amend the comp plan on an annual basis, again, to align back with the other premise that our comp plan should be considered living documents. And criteria number five is, is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? And the annual amendment process is appropriate for this request? The PMC establishes in accordance with the State Growth Management Act, along with our own provisions, that the city may provide an opportunity for amendments to the comprehensive plan on an annual basis. This is a, the only process for which an amendment to the comp plan would be accommodated. Any questions on the criteria?
Councilwoman Serrano?
Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez, can you kind of reiterate what you said about this isn't a zoning change? I saw a couple of facial expressions that I think we might want to elucidate that and just bring a little additional analysis there.
Yes, absolutely. This is a land use proposal, not a rezone, and certainly not a project. The current zone for this site is RS twenty. So right now, the only allowable uses would be those permitted under the RS twenty, and that would remain the same even if the amendment were adopted. Any change to the zone would require an application for a rezone. Rezone applications require a public hearing with the Pasco Hearing Examiner along with another set of criteria, which actually does ask for the changed conditions to demonstrate the need for the zone change, along with public hearing and notice requirements as well. And the rezones obviously require final council decision as well. If a project were beat to propose, that again requires its own development review process along with a separate environmental review. So this is step one, a step two for an amendment process, but unless the end use is for a development that complies with the current RS twenty, any other kind of project would likely require separate hearings for rezones and then the development itself. So quite a long ways to go.
Okay, thanks. So just to make sure, as I soundbite this, the strong distinction here is because A, there is no project, and B, this is only addressing the plan. There's no actual action to this property at this time. Should the owner desire to do so, it would have to pass this hurdle and several other intermittent hurdles with a final hurdle down the road, presumably sometime next spring or next summer, being a final land use request of this body being the council of changing that. This is just simply changing a document that would allow for a request for the change, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For Tim Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just point of clarification. I'm gonna say the same thing and just say it different than Councilwoman Repeat. And I think it's just needed on some of these items. So the point of clarification is this, are we clear that this is just the baby steps of evaluating the requests? Or the first steps? Let's fix the word.
Correct. The recommendation before City Council today is to approve for this item to simply be evaluated. The results of that evaluation will be in front of the Planning Commission and council sometime in twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Seeing none.
It's just got Councilman Milney. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I did want to make a statement that I realize the staff is limited on time and resources, so I would actually believe that this is the wrong step that we should make. I know they probably haven't met most of the criteria, but I do believe that having residential, even low-density residential shouldn't be changed. That intersection is very busy, especially at certain times of day. So I prefer to keep it the correct zone it is, and anything that is commercial in my district would be, I'd definitely vote against it, especially the proximity to other houses, especially other low-density houses and other houses along the riverfront area. I do think it's a wrong decision, so my vote will be no on this. Thank you. And I ask for no as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four-three-eight-five, establish- I move to approve resolution number four-three-eight-five, establishing the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan amendment docket list of item, list of item for further evaluation.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilman Campos. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay.
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 There's five yes, two no. And it moves forward. Thank you. And with that, we will move on to our next item on the agenda. This is a quasi-judicial matter, ordinance number forty-six ninety, Barker Ranch First Edition rezone from RS one to R one. Director Gonzalez.
Yes, good evening. Again, Mayor, members of council, the city received a petition for a rezone request from Promate Construction to change the zoning from RS one suburban to R one low-density residential near the northwest corner of Burns Road and Broadmoor Boulevard. This location is slightly west of Broadmoor Boulevard. There is also an associated preliminary plat that was applied for and reviewed by the Pasco Hearing Examiner on, through a public hearing on May twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. And on May twenty-five, twenty-twenty-one, the Hearing Examiner recommended approval of both the rezone and the associated preliminary plat, assuming that the rezone received an approval from the, from the City Council. No appeals of this recommendation were received. The Pasco Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map indicates the site is classified for low dens, classified for low-density development, residential development. The R one low-density residential zoning district proposes a permitted zone of the comp plan land use, and the area is adjacent to the Broadmoor Master Planning Area and, which also consisted of a separate environmental review, which accommodated all of the growth within and outside of the Broadmoor area. Their request is consistent with the adopted Pasco Comprehensive Plan, and the recommendation is for a City Council approval of the rezone for you this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions on this specific item?
If I could, just read the script real quick to let folks know.
Go ahead.
So this is a quasi-judicial hearing. It is a decision or a proceeding to render a final decision on materials presented. It's defined as a proceeding in which council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies, and the hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows: A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties; B, any direct or indirect financial interest in outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally; C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts; D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing; and finally, E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Seeing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you for that. Council members, are there any questions on this specific item? Seeing none. Thank you, Director Gonzalez, for the explanation. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four-three-nine-zero, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located near the northwest corner of Burns Road and Broadmoor Boulevard, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from RS one to R one, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion and seconded by Councilwoman Roach. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that was an aye. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we move on to our next item on the agenda, another quasi-judicial matter, ordinance number forty-six ninety-one, Glacier Park rezone from C one to R three. And again, Director Gonzalez.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. On August ninth, apologies, I got the wrong notes up on my screen this time. There was a public hearing to consider the merits of a rezone from C one to R three, located on Burns Road at the intersection of Ochoco Lane. A public hearing was held by the Pasco Hearing Examiner with a recommendation for approval to City Council in August of this, this past year. A SEPA determination of non-significance was issued by city staff as well in the summer, and the Hearing Examiner recommendation and staff concurrence with the recommendation is for City Council recommendation of approval of the ordinance before you this evening. This, I do want to call out that this site actually was the discussion of several discussions associated with the adoption of our previous comprehensive plan in twenty-eighteen, and we've been working with the applicant to satisfy the intent of the comprehensive plan. But again, the recommendation is for approval of the ordinance for you this evening. Thank you.
Thanks for that.
Madam Mayor, so again, this is a quasi-judicial matter. The same disclosures would apply with regard to a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties, any direct or indirect financial interest, whether there's been any prejudgment of the issues, whether there's been any ex parte contact, and finally, as well, has there been any other, is there any other conflict that a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially? So any disclosures would now need to be made. Seeing none? And is there any member of the public wishing to disqualify anyone? Seeing none?
Thank you for that. Are there any questions or comments on this matter from any of our council members? Councilwoman Roach?
No questions in regards to the actual rezone. Just a notice that we're looking at item four-six-nine-one, correct? Glacier Park rezone?
Correct.
So looking at the ordinance number, I think I'm on page three of the packet. So the first whereas saying Peter Harpster of Actera Engineering on behalf of Big Sky Developers LLC, is that the correct? Is that the correct item?
That's correct.
But was, it says Burns Road and Ochoco Lane of the prior item. Do you see that there?
On the, on the ordinance number, I'm looking at the first whereas statement where it describes both the applicant, the firm, along with the development, the parcels ending in zero-zero-five-two and zero-zero-five-three and zero-zero-five-four, located north and adjacent to the intersection of Burns and Ochoco Lane, which is the general vicinity of where that red box is located on the, I'm sorry, on the, the red site located on the screen for council.
So this, on item B in the motion, it's saying that this is located along the north side of Santafer Parkway between Roads ninety and ninety-two. So I'm, I'm just, those are two different, those are entirely two different. They're, they're parallel roads, Santafer and Burns. Ninety and ninety-two are the same section of roads you're talking about, but you're talking about two different areas, and so I'm confused because the item before was Ochoco Lane and Burns, and now this is the item on Santafer. Is this the amended?
Because the, the update shows I moved to adopt ordinance forty-six-nine-one on my name going, and then these feet, and then it's got the coordinates. So that's not-
Was this one of the, okay.
No, this was one of the ones that was updated at six forty-seven, I think. So if you go back in and then like refresh it, you'll see the new-
For the record, the packet was updated at six forty-seven PM tonight, and that item was one of the ones that was-
Yeah.
So that was really confusing, so I didn't see that update. Because I was already here at six-thirty.
I don't, I wouldn't worry about that. Just take the new one. There you go.
Okay.
Where are we on? Are you, you're not in there. Keep going. Right there. You'll see that that's got the-
Thank you. This is so different. Sorry, that was like, we, we are doing, we've got things chopped and screwed. All right, I guess it was just my version.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Roach, do you still have any questions on this matter?
Nope, just have my mic on.
Okay. Perfect. With no other question, with no other questions or comments, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-one, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located in the north, four-six-seven-point-zero-eight feet, in the south, four-seven-one-point-zero-eight feet of the southwest quarter, of the southwest quarter, Section Three, township nine north, range twenty-nine east, WM Franklin County, Washington, from C one to R three, and further authorize publication by summary.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. And with that, we go on to our next item on the agenda. Give me just a second because I needed to refresh my agenda as well. We move on to next item on the agenda, another quasi-judicial matter, ordinance number forty-six ninety-two, Helena addition number two, rezone from C three to R one. And again, Director Gonzalez.
This is the last reason for this evening. The city received a petition for a rezone from B four Development to rezone approximately three-point-two acres from the C three general business zone to the R one low-density residential zone. The parcel is located along the south side of East Helena Street and about one block east of Heritage Boulevard. The city issued an environmental determination of non-significance on August twenty-first. On August ninth, the Pasco Hearing Examiner conducted a public hearing to consider their request. Following the public hearing, the examiner recommended approval of the request on August fifteenth. No appeals of this recommendation have been received. The comprehensive plan land use for this site is mixed residential and commercial. The proposed R one zoning district would be in alignment with the land use map and the city's comprehensive plan. There is a recommendation from the Hearing Examiner for approval of this rezone, and again, happy to answer any questions I can this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, so for the final time, the council members should consider whether they have any potential conflicts related to demonstrated bias, direct or indirect financial interest, any prejudgment of the issues, any ex parte contact, or any conflict that council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. Any disclosures would need to be made now. Seeing none? Any member of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council? Nuns?
Do we have any questions or comments regarding this matter?
Just to clarify for clarification, Director Gonzalez, so in the motion, it says, sorry, in the item on the agenda, it says C three to R one. And then as I'm reading the summary, it says the mixed residential and commercial designate, designation accommodates a range of housing. So which one is it? Is it the mixed residential commercial or is it the R one?
The rezone request is to go from C three to R one. The R one zoning district is a permitted zoning district of the mixed residential and commercial land use, which permits a variety of, like, commercial and residential uses.
Thank you.
Or various residential uses.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-six-nine-two, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located along the south side of East Helena Street and approximately one block east of Heritage Boulevard, Pasco, Franklin County, Washington, from C three to R one, and further authorize publication by summary only.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Blastow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Milney, are you still there? We may have lost him.
I am here. Just sometimes it, it doesn't want to unmute, so, but I did vote yes, so thank you.
So that's unanimous. Thank you. And with that, we move on to our next item on the agenda, ordinance number forty-six ninety-three, Franklin County irrigation- Franklin County Irrigation District Franchise Agreement, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Uh this item is one that we talked about uh at our last workshop. It's a franchise agreement with Franklin County Irrigation District for their facilities within uh. It's shared within our public rights of ways, and uh I don't believe much has changed since the last workshop. And so we would recommend approval of the franchise agreement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council, uh Mayor Pretem, um Brown?
No question, I'm, I'm like Zara, left the Lego.
Okay. Alright, it's been a long week.
Tell me about it.
No other questions or comments? Thank you, Mister uh Director Worley, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to adopt ordinance number four, six, nine, three, granting. To and receiving from the Franklin County Irrigation District one mutual. Reciprocal franchises for assessment, for easement and right-of-way use. And further authorize, authorize publication and summary only.
I'll second that. Seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? None, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much for that. And with that, our next item, resolution number forty-three eighty-five, twenty twenty-three, comprehensive plan amendment docket. And we turn it back over to Director Gonzalez.
Good evening, uh mayor, members of council. Uh the city received a petition in July twenty twenty-three from K N S Family Enterprises LLC. Uh to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way located on North Wyoming Avenue, about a half block north of East Superior Street. Uh during the evaluation of the request, staff determined that the proposed vacation would not adversely impact transportation access. Or a vehicle circulation within the vicinity, or be detrimental to the overall citywide uh transportation planning efforts. Uh the right-of-way is not contemplated or needed for future use, or part of any identified future long-range planning or project need. Uh in accordance with the Pasco Municipal Code, section twelve forty zero seven zero, uh the proposed vacation meets the necessary criteria. Uh the PMC.
Director Gonzalez, I am so sorry to interrupt you. We've, we've moved this one up to the top.
No, he's, he's reading F, but you called out E, so I think we need to just make it clear what we're talking about.
Yeah, let me, let me read the actual, the corrected. Resolution forty-three eighty-nine is what you're reading, correct? Correct. So for the record, let me read the actual i- uh item that we're on. Resolution number forty-three eighty-nine, setting a public hearing date to consider the right-of-way vacation at Wyoming Avenue. Um and go ahead, sorry for the interruption.
My apologies about that, I was just really excited about this one. The accordance, uh in accordance with Title twelve, the PMC, uh the request uh. Um requires that a uh council determine a public hearing date to consider the merits of the proposed vacation via resolution. And attached to the report is a re- a resolution with the staff recommendation that the city council move forward. Uh with the resolution and set Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, uh as a time and date for the public hearing to consider the request. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and again, I apologize for the mix-up on my reading. Are there any questions or comments, Councilwoman Roach?
I think that staff are just trying to keep us on our toes today.
After daylight savings time, I like uh add four amendments to the packet and just, you know. See if we're paying attention, I'm not turning off my mic when I'm done talking.
It's not like I had like sixty meetings in, in one week.
Well.
Thank you.
That's all my, that's my only comment.
That was your only comment, okay. Any other comments from council members regarding this issue, or any issue? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to approve resolution number four, three, eight, nine, setting seven P M. Monday, December the fourth, twenty twenty-three, as a time and date for a public hearing to consider the vacation. Of a portion of North Wyoming Avenue right-of-way and Fry's addition to Pasco, Washington.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Blaisdell, thank you. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. With that, we go on to the next item, uh resolution number forty-three ninety, supplement number one. To H L A Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated Incorporated Professional Services Agreement for the Oregon Avenue Overlay. And we have Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am here to turn this item over to our deputy public director for engineering, Maria Sarah.
Thank you very much, welcome.
Evening, mayor and council members. I will be very brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh this is an amendment to an existing B S A with H L A Engineering. They provided design services for our Oregon Avenue Overlay project. The intent of this uh amendment is to include uh support throughout the bidding process. And construction support, as well as account for some additional efforts that were needed through uh coordination with D O T. Since this Oregon is a state route, uh in order to get the design completed and approved. This is, project is funded through federal dollars, so we needed a lot of approvals in that process. And um this amendment is well below the total co- typical industry standard cost for this type of services during construction.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions, comments? Councilman Milne, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, y- you're right, this is going by fast. Uh can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to approve resolution number four, three, nine, zero, authorizing the city manager to sign, to sign and execute supplement number one. For the professional services agreement with H L A Engineering and Land Surveying Incorporated. For the Oregon Avenue Overlay, S R three ninety-seven project.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by, and I'd like to apologize, I've been saying your name wrong, Blaisdell, Councilwoman Blaisdell. Uh has seconded this motion. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. That, we go on to the next item on the agenda, resolution number forty-three ninety-one supplemental agreement number two. To H D R Engineering Incorporated Professional Services Agreement for the Argent Road Widening Phase Three Project. And again, Director Worley.
Over to Deputy Director Sarah.
Evening again, this will also be a very quick presentation to you. Um as you uh read, this is related to Argent Road Widening Phase Three, this project is in construction. Our design engineer was H D R, they had provided design services. We had some remaining allocation in that contract, which we moved into construction support services, that was amendment number one. And now um seeing that we still require some of their services, there's still some work to be done in the project. We need to extend this deadline as well. Um we are proposing a small amendment to that original contract to allow for their support throughout the construction. Complete construction of the project and closeout, this project is also federally funded. So we appreciate the support of our consultants to make sure that we're complying with all their requirements.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from council? I do have one quick question. Is there a change to the budget with this phase three?
Oh, this cost uh can still be absorbed within the contingency.
Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, um can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to approve resolution number four, three, nine, one, authorizing the, the city manager to execute. Supplemental agreement number two to professional service agreement two, one dash zero, three, six. With H D R Engineering Incorporated for Engineering Construction Support Services. On the Argent Road Widening Phase Three Project.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye. Sorry, no, there's a motion seconded, yes. And we got my eyes. And it passes unanimously. Uh I'm moving maybe a little too fast. Uh last item on the agenda, resolution number forty-three ninety-two, inter-agency agreement with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. For traffic safety emphasis patrols, and we have our very own Chief Ken Roski.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is a request that we see annually come through. As we gear up for our increased traffic enforcement um and supplemental uh grant monies. To pay the overtime to work those for our officers in designated areas where we see um. Uh increased traffic um accidents and or uh uh targeted areas to impa- impact. Um uh those areas, this is uh supported by the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission. And will uh continue through the, through the rest of the year, starting in October.
Thank you. Um or do we have any questions, comments, uh Councilman Campos?
Couple brief comments here, I just, based on how fast we're going through, I haven't seen an a- agenda this long since uh. Former city manager Zable was in order, and I think we're doing pretty good, so um. But Chief, I just wanted to, one, you know, you've always got our supportive counsel, I think every time you've brought forward some budget uh things we've never told you no. Um but anecdotally, I know you guys had some of your traffic uh stuff pilfered. One of the, the reader boards, what, what was the story there?
Damaged, uh somebody uh took out one of our inf- uh traffic reader boards that calculates your speed. And uh so we are uh diligent, working that case, we have some leads, and uh we'll hopefully bring uh, bring someone to justice soon.
With the extra overtime, we're probably gonna fund for you, we can catch him.
Yeah, and, and, and this overtime is actually um. S- uh money's come from the state traffic safety commission, so. Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you for your support.
Any other questions or comments from council? And Chief Roski, I wanna see you continue to have her full support. Uh with that, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to approve resolution number four, three, nine, two, authorizing the city manager to execute. The inter-agency agreement between the Washington Traffic Safety Commission and the city of Pasco. For traffic safety emphasis patrols.
And I'll second that. There's a motion and seconded by Councilwoman Roach, all those in favor say aye. And none opposed. Passes unanimously. With that, we'll jump right on to uh item eleven, unfinished business, none listed. New business, none listed. Item thirteen, miscellaneous discussion, uh city manager Adam Lincoln.
Mayor Council, get a, a few announcements tonight, uh starting with Director Gonzalez.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, wanted to highlight three things uh going on in the department um right now. Uh first was that uh last Friday, staff welcomed the Washington State Department of Commerce Director Michael Fong to the city of Pasco. To share updates on our hu- our, our ongoing efforts to address the uh, the housing issues going across, going along in the region. Along with city manager Adam Lincoln and deputy city manager Rija Sigdel, a tour was provided showcasing the uh construction of several housing developments. Uh the Department of Commerce um reiterated their support and commended Pasco's efforts to address um the housing crisis with. Uh practical uh policy solutions with the help of obviously our city council and, and leadership. Um I think the adoption of our housing action plan, along with several items that really bolster that plan, uh demonstrate Pasco's um uh commitment. And um and work towards addressing that crisis uh aggressively. Uh also want to um let members of the public and council know that the Tri-Cities Home Consortium. Uh made up of cities of Pasco, Kennewick and Richland, is now accepting applications from organizations and agencies. That address families uh or, or individuals at risk of homelessness, over one million dollars is available. Uh with applications due December eighth, please reach out to our department if uh you're interested in learning more about that. And then lastly, wanted to share that the city of Pasco staff will be meeting with um the director of the um. Uh Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities to provide updates on several key initiatives related to our residential design standards, that's our big zoning code update. Along with the pending street connectivity effort, both of those items are slated to be back in front of council before the end of the month. Along with uh sharing some updates on our recent efforts to update and modernize our development review process. So uh just another opportunity for us to meet with one of our sti- uh key stakeholders. And again, those items will be uh in front of council uh at the end of November. Thank you.
Director Worley?
Good evening, I just wanted to let council and the public also know that uh the, the city of Pasco will be hosting the Washington State Transportation Commission next week. We have uh two meetings, uh Tuesday and Wednesday, we will be giving the commission members a tour of. Uh Pasco's transportation projects uh throughout the area. And then there will be two days full of exciting discussions amongst all the jurisdictions and. And economic agencies within the area to talk about impacts of uh development on transportation, including industrial. And uh those kinds of things, so I invite everybody to come, it will be held right here in the council chambers next Tuesday and Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.
For our, our next director speaks, um wanted to make a brief announcement to the city council that uh. Jesse Rice has accepted the permanent position as the Parks and Rec Director for the city of Pasco. Um Jesse's been an employee of the city for, what, more than twenty-five years at this point. Um he takes on assignments and runs with them in a way that is uh beyond impressive. He has adapted to this position and went from uh just taking it on as an interim role, trying to make sure that we had somebody, somebody in the seat. While we looked for somebody, and uh I, I think really exceeded all of the expectations of, of anyone who's, who's been in this position. Um really impressed of, and, and proud to um be able to call him this, the director of Parks and Recreation for the city of Pasco. Um from working with the, the, the farmers market, the P S K. Um taking on several projects that I think are, are not only key to the community, but key to the city council and, and really. Highlighting them in a way that, that really helped make, makes Pasco stand out. Um he's, he's done a great job representing the city. Um on a, on a regional stage, making sure that, that our projects are supported and, and well-publicized. Um he has, has worked really um really well hand-in-hand with the Animal Control Authority. He's built morale in the department, he's been a, a, a strong collaborator with, with not only his department, but across uh departmental lines as well. And so wanted to proudly announce that Director Rice will remain a director, but in a different department now. And the Director of Fun has some updates too.
I was just gonna say that, you took that one away from me. Thank you, Director of Fun.
Thank you for that, yeah, I'm looking forward to the opportunity, I think as I've mentioned to others, I think one of the. One of my goals is for opportunities to the community and engage those communities that to take advantage of those opportunities. So that's what we'll be looking forward to the next year, is I try to convince you to spend less on public safety and more on recreation and fun, so. Just wanted to get that done with now, so. Um with that though, I do have a, a list of uh both uh fun and informative updates we'll get through, so we can get moving, uh good, going home. Uh first of those is that the city completed the next part of our United Way fundraising, which is our United Way auction this week. And we raised close to uh forty-five hundred dollars, so we're adding that to our total, and we are competing against the other two cities, so we're hoping to come out on top of that. Uh another update to come soon. Um following up with uh Spooky Hall, as mentioned, um we had, we estimated about eight hundred members of the community come through Spooky Hall. Um appreciate staff's efforts in putting up the decorations, as well as uh all the communities, uh members that donated candy to that effort, uh it was uh pretty good. Um this Saturday, uh Sunwell's Golf Course, we hosted the state cross-country meet, uh which is supported by our Parks and Rec staff. And approximately thirteen hundred athletes competed in that, and that event went real well. Some of them got rained on a little heavy, but for most of the day, we, they were able to squeeze the races in between rains. This Friday, we're going to uh observe Veterans Day, the holiday, uh so city hall offices will be closed to the public. Um so please take note of that, however, on Saturday, we will be hosting our Veterans Day event out at uh City View Cemetery, starting at twelve thirty. Uh we have the tent set up in case the weather's in uh inclement, and we have a speaker ready to go for that. Um and then we kicked off something last week, our first ever Reefs of a, Reefs Across America event, which is actually occurs on December sixteenth. However, we've already had a hundred and fifty wreaths donated to this event, so we feel pretty strong uh start with that. So we'll have more information as we get closer to December. Um I think as we mentioned, we did wrap up our final farmers market this week, which was uh, which was a great time, perfect weather, we had our race. Um several hundred attendees come out overall. I do believe, in addition to this official picture of the mayor here doing her official duties as we speak of. Um we also have her doing some more official duties here with uh Santa, so. Uh he did confirm, you're still on the nice list, so great job, but there's still five or six weeks to go, so let's not blow it. So uh we have that planned. And then, uh, just two other events and we'll get out of here, uh, we are planning our Winterfest event, which will be relocating down to Peanuts Park with Santa, he'll be making a return visit. Um, so that will be on December ninth, and we're working on recruiting vendors and staff will be visiting downtown businesses this week to encourage them to participate or sign up as vendors, so exciting there. And then I think our last big event for the year before recreation staff cut me off is our, uh, Cable Bridge Run, which will be on December sixteenth, so we'll have some more information on that, but if you're interested, now's the time to sign up for that. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, always Director of Fun. Any other questions, uh, or comments, sorry, any other, uh, comments from council members? With, with that, seeing none, and with that, it is nine thirteen, and this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you everyone for joining us this evening, have a great night.